Wait on six or go for it. All right, all right. It's six o'clock and I'll call this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council to order. We do have a quorum present. Appreciate everybody being here and great to see all the staff and community members showing up too. Good to see you guys, y'all look good out there. Mary's gonna lead us in our invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and Lord, we just thank you for all of our city employees who dedicate their time and talents to this community. And Lord, we just ask that you give us wisdom and direction to be good stewards of what you've entrusted to us. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen, please join for our pledge. All right, if the councils had the opportunity to review the consent agenda, we would need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Second for Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, items of community interest. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Any visitor, got something for community interests you want to share? Come on.
No, your report's coming up.
Do it later, okay, okay. You could do it here.
I know the committee's really excited about this.
Yeah, Chad's ready.
But the waiter.
Just not yet, everything, okay. Kathy, anybody else? We don't have anybody here signed up for assistance participation, so we will jump right into our items to be considered. Slide agenda tonight, but we'll have, enjoy having some reports from the departments, so look forward to getting to that. So items to be considered, number two, consider an act upon approval of resolution twenty-five dash oh one ordering the general election for May third. So it seems early, we do it today though, okay? Oh, that's right, I always forget that until we do it. So we need a motion, hit a motion to call an election.
I'll make a motion.
Motion for Marty?
I'll second.
Second for Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, so let's, we'll jump right to discussion items then, yeah, so this will be, this will be fun, yeah. Dr. Pike.
Name, address, and date of birth. Chad Pike, Franklin County. I'm pretty young. We weren't sure if everybody actually seen the wastewater plant before, you know, how it is today. And in this photo, you can see the side, how it was before we got started. And this is your, you know, it was just a carport, you know? And by changing it to the new lab, we're projecting we'll save about thirty-five grand a year. So in two years, it's paid for itself and we're making money. And this was the old office, I mean, recliner, the board up windows, and it was pretty bad. And we, I mean, we went, we did everything top to bottom. I think it had two or three lights still working in the building, so we got all the lights working, ceiling tiles. They painted the vents, I mean, our guys painted the interior of all the old office. They rerouted the plumbing, you know, put in new fixtures, and this was their lab, how it looked before. Now it's where you would walk into the lab. And that was the whole bathroom, I mean, they had a rusted out shower, it was, it was pretty bad, yeah, it was pretty bad. And as far as the water plant, I can't show y'all a whole lot of pictures, just this, because it's still ongoing. We figure we'll be done in the next few weeks, but I'd like to show y'all a completed, that's right. But I mean, just the outside, I mean, it's a huge improvement. We got rid of the, you know, the windy units, got everything painted. They do have a new central heating air HVAC, like a mini split. We're waiting on it to get hooked up, you know, but it's looking a lot better.
And one of the things I wanted to add to this is that you see, you see how they've changed, but TCUQ comes to inspectors. And when they see what we had before, I mean, it's not, you automatically, if I was an inspector, what am I gonna do? Look, your building looks like this, I'm gonna be really looking through this to find things that are wrong.
Well, I think it gives your employees a little pride, I mean, if you have something nice, they're gonna keep it nice. If it's clean, they'll keep it clean.
Exactly.
Or then they're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah.
But, nah, I think that's all I got.
And I just add too, it's all practical too, when you go through, we had several went through the wastewater plant while ago.
Well, we was, you know, planned on having a TV and couch and we scratched all that.
You've got rid of the recliner, Mike.
I love, that was the first thing, you know, I wanted to get rid of the old recliners. You know, when I started, you know, Corey, he told me, he said, man, you wouldn't believe, we got all this stuff all set up. I thought, I would believe it. I absolutely would believe it. I do believe it.
That's impressive.
I'll preface, I want to preface Blake's, I've asked Blake to kind of come in and you all have been getting a little sympathy of information from me in the weekly reports about the fire department, the ESDA and all those other kinds of stuff. Blake is here to tell you the whole story tonight and to give you an opportunity to ask questions. Because I think that he's gonna bring to us some very significant issues that we are going to have to weigh in on, that you are going to have to weigh in on as council at some time and probably sooner rather than later. But I'm just gonna, and I really, first, the second thing is I really appreciate that he's here because we have a, we have a professional fire department now. Right, it's the standard. There you go.
Blake Sheffield, I'm the Mount Vernon Fire Chief. So I kind of put some stuff together today, kind of bring everybody up to date in what, what has gone through as far as the ESD. So I came in here, Mount Vernon, around the end of July of last year. And before that, I had met with the previous chief over the ESD, kind of working with him some and trying to get that, so that's, it's not something that was, that I had brought to the county, it had already been here. From my understanding, it had been here for almost eleven years that people have talked about doing the ESD in this county. So I, just saying that I wasn't the one to bring it here, the idea, I was trying to help push it along. So I had talked to several firefighters when I started working here, and they had talked about doing the ESD, and so we looked into it. And so I had met with the, I had a meeting on the September twelfth, I discussed the ESD with all the county fire chiefs. We had a meeting up there at the barbecue place, and they were all for it. So I ended up taking the next step and I met with each and every commissioner and the judge at the fire station, one at a time, and told them what we were wanting to do. And at the time, they were like, yeah, you, you know, as far as county funding, you're pretty much, were pretty much tapped out. So you need to go ahead and look at the, look at the ESD. So I did, got, had a meeting with the county fire chiefs again, so we all did a vote five to zero back to pursue the ESD. Submitted a petition, we did a, had to do a petition, submitted a petition to the, the judge on December sixteenth at my office there at the fire station. We had over a hundred and seventy Franklin County residents that had signed that petition to pursue the ESD. The judge submitted to the petition to the commissioners court on December thirty-first. He had, you have to have that submitted and have a hearing, it has to be posted for twenty-one days. They did not make the deadline, the, the county had had a little hiccup there or something and did not make the deadline for the twenty-one days, it was like a twenty days. So basically, there was no hearing, so you couldn't, so the ESD was basically dead at that point. So that's, that's kind of where we're at, so it's, I was told that we might need to look at the ESD again in a couple of years. I just don't know that the ESD will, I don't, I don't know that, that we'll ever get one in this county. I would love to try it again, but it's, it's a lot of work to do the ESD. I've got, so basically back, that's kind of as far as the ESD, that's where, if you have any questions on that, I can, I've got some dates and things like that, but I don't know where else to, to go on that. As far as the fire department, so the Mount Vernon Fire Department currently has sixteen volunteers. Ten of those are struc- structural, are certified structural firefighters through the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. So you think, well, that's a great thing, well, it's, it's a great thing, but it also isn't, because all these guys that are certified, most of them are career firefighters, and so that means they work shift work. So basically, a third of the year, they're not here. So as they're, as they're volunteering, a third of the time, they, they're not even gonna be here. Well then, if you work shift work, your pager or your radio is gonna usually be turned off about eight or nine o'clock at night, because you have to go on shift the next day. These guys get up three or four in the morning and drive to wherever, to their departments. So we, we currently, Mount Vernon currently has two active volunteers. One active volunteer is a volunteer that makes at least twenty-five percent of the calls in the city of Mount Vernon. We currently have two of them and they're back here in the back today, or tonight. A lot of these younger firefighters that we have that are volunteers and also certified firefighters, I can tell you from experience, what's, what's, what you're gonna have happen is these guys are younger, they're excited about being a fireman, they have the adrenaline rush and they're helping people and things like that. But as they continue their career at a paid department in the bigger, in the metroplex, Texas County over the metroplex, they're going to slowly get tired of that. It's the, the new wears off because they're doing this for twenty-four and forty-eight hours, and then when they come home, they, this, and you, you see things where, as a firefighter, you're gonna see wrecks and things like that, and you don't want to come back and just start volunteering and doing that, because you don't want to see it anymore. So that's, that helps, that's gonna push away more, more volunteers that are coming up. You have not only the, the lack of volunteers in the county, and like I say, this is not a Franklin County issue, this is a nationwide issue, that people just don't want to volunteer for a lot of things anymore. Even though Mount Vernon has taken, has done a step years ago, and they do pay volunteers, it's just, they, the younger generation wants more. Also, the, the risk involved in volunteering now, used to, you'd go to the fire station, you'd make a call or two and you'd go back, well, you don't have the time and then the risk, I don't know if you've ever sat on there on Interstate thirty and you've had an eighteen wheeler blow by at eighty miles an hour, and the fire truck, you sit in it and it just shakes. It's, it's scary knowing that that could be, you know, there's, every time you go out there, it take, you take a huge risk. So, so people, because of that, people don't want to volunteer. Now, as to be a firefighter, if you're now, most firemen now have a fourteen percent chance now of dying of cancer than the average person. So that's another thing, it's just starts stacking up. So you have less and less volunteers and you have less, there is a shortage of firemen, you know, basically nationwide. Mount we, Mount Vernon, we have, currently have three guys that are currently enrolled in the Texas Commission on Fire Protection Inspector one and two class. That is to, so we can start an inspection program in the future here for the city, as the city grows, you'll need to start, we'll start having, start doing inspections throughout the city, we'll do surveys and things like that. We have one guy that has, a younger guy who's now enrolled in structural firefighting, and then these are, these classes are fully reimbursed by the Texas Forest Services for, to reimburse the city for the cost of sending these guys to these classes. Right now, Mount Vernon responds to around eleven hundred calls a year in Mount Vernon and Franklin County, and I'm gonna tell you, for a volunteer department, that's a lot of calls. That's, that's a lot of calls for a volunteer department. In twenty twenty-three, we had eleven hundred thirteen calls. Twenty twenty-four, we had eleven hundred fifty-nine calls, and right now, we're on pace to make over twelve hundred calls this year in twenty twenty-five. In twenty twenty-three, the department had a no response to twenty-six percent of the calls that were made in the city. Y'all, back in April first of twenty twenty-four, you started the part-time where you had somebody Monday through Friday, six-thirty, six-thirty, and that was a great thing, and that ended up dropping the no response down to around thirteen to fourteen percent. So you basically cut that in half. In March, I'll be, I'll be, I mean, the process, I've already started, that we're trying to do a safer grant through FEMA. FEMA, the safer grant is a grant that funds, funds the staffing for fire departments, and so I'll, I'll start that. I'll go, and it subsidizes each city, kind of lets the city, helps them get a kickoff and get them started in funding. And it's, it's a grant that starts off at a hundred percent the first year, eighty percent the next year, and then sixty, so it's, it's a three-year grant. They're extremely hard to get, I have a meeting this, this Thursday with the chief in Cooper. He, Cooper received one of those grants this last year, and so I'm gonna go talk with him and see, you know, what I can do to help with our grant here. We also, our fire station was built in nineteen eighty-seven, thirty-eight years ago, it, just like the facilities here, it needs an upgrade, so had a couple of firefighters come up and they said, hey, we've got a grant, we're gonna put in for this grant for, through Lowe's. And I was like, oh, whatever, okay, sure. So they put in a grant, and this grant is called the Hometown First Responder Program. And what it is, it's a fifty to a hundred thousand dollar grant that helps update first responder facilities. So, so we were put in for that, we also made sure that we put, that we had a Lowe's distribution center right next door, so that should also help as far as that grant. I've, I've handed over a proposed budget to the city manager, and as far as staffing, and this is staffing only, and something that FEMA wants to share or, it's something that I look at, but I, I just, I think for the long term, for the city of Mount Vernon, this is something that's gonna have to be addressed. Right now, I think the county's in the process of looking at possibly doing a county-only fire department. I don't, I don't, I don't know that for sure, I think they're kicking that around, that's, I haven't heard that directly from them, but that's kind of what I've been told. So these are, these are just something that we're, it's something that the city will have to address probably sooner than later. Thank you. Any questions?
How many, what percentage of those calls are in the city versus the county?
So on the calls, in twenty twenty-three, fifty-four percent of our calls were in the county, in twenty-four, fifty-three percent were in the county. So about, right at a little over fifty percent. And that's outside the city limits. So.
And those aren't always fire calls, is that like lift to C S?
Fire, yes, but that's fire EMS, that's, that, we have a, so I had to, I had put a thing together the other day, and I think we had twenty-six different categories of things that we had been calling out to. So it may be help, help, help assistant officer, wires down, transformer blown, it's, you know, vehicle assist, blocking for officers on the interstate, it's just, cause all kinds of stuff. I did not have one cat in the tree, I don't know, I'm surprised, but didn't have any of those.
So Blake?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and share about, a little bit about what the budget would look like to hire three shifts with two firefighters on each shift. And then also what we would have to do structurally if we were to go that direction.
Okay, to, so if you went with two fire, two firefighters, so you'd be actually hiring two, there'd be six total firefighters. That would, and that would be my salary, the, the six full-time, and then a part-time person Monday through Friday, kind of what we're doing now, so it gives you three people. You're looking at, it's seven hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-one, now minus, you take the hundred and thirty-sixth that the city right now is currently budgeting in there. Salary only, that's salary only, that's no apparatus, that's no, that's just salary only.
Including benefits.
Including benefits, that's full benefits for those.
And that would give us twenty-four, seven?
Twenty, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. So you're, you would have your thirteen, fourteen percent no response would be zero. It's hard to make, it's hard to have volunteers respond to calls when they're volunteering. And so unless you're paying them while they're on call, you can't make them go on a call, I guess that all sounds good, but, and then I've got, I've got two other, you know, two other options, but that's the, right now, Cooper is doing the three full-time. And, and doing that also with, but they've got the grant to do that, and they're gonna, they're, sorry, they're gonna turn around and they're gonna add to that immediately, because they've got that safer grant. But it's, it's, you know, the fire department is an insurance, and that's really what boils it down, nobody wants to pay their insurance, and I, you know, I get it, but you, you sure like to have that insurance when you, when you need it. So, and we don't, you know, the fire department generates, it does not generate much revenue, so it's, it's just something, but I, I, you know, I probably shouldn't have said that, but.
If we got the grant, though, could we apply that to the seven hundred and eighty-five?
Sure. And it'll be hard, you know, I, I sent that to you about where the, where we were, I forget what that program was, that we were registered as, and that's just for a federal. But I have, I was either gonna try to attempt a grant, or there's a company out of Houston that a lot of people use, Vickers Consulting out of Houston, and they do a lot of the, the safer grants, and so they have really good, really good results. So, and I've already started, I've already got, got their, their information and have been, they send me a worksheet, and I just basically fill out all the information, and then they turn around and take it, and then they have grant writers that take it, take it from there.
So if we were to go to a twenty-four, seven operation, what would, would we have to do to the fire station?
So we'd have to update the fire station, right now, the, the fire station being built in eighty-seven has no, has no bunker in order to stay. So you'd have to build a couple of those, and build off to the side of the facility, we've got some small plans that we looked at, and hopefully that grant would help cover that. Build the two bunk rooms, we'd have to convert, we have a big closet area or storage room, we would relocate, we have a gear extractor, we'd have to relocate that out to the outside. And then we, we'd have to make a shower, we'd have to take the ladies restroom and convert that into a shower, because you'd have to have a, basically a decon or a shower area for, for the firefighters to stay in. So it'd be a little bit, be quite a bit of work, and then we would have to convert that closet into, try to some sort of like a kitchen, small kitchenette, or, you know, put some cabinets. It's already got a sink and stuff in there, but it's all, all that has to be updated, it's almost forty years old, so.
We're looking at the area, kind of the front yardage you walk up, is maybe, Blake mentioned, might be a possibility of coming that, that direction with the bunker, possibly.
Right, when you walk up, at the front door of the fire station there, if you're facing to the left, there's, there's two, these two windows, basically removing those windows and putting doors there, coming out ten feet, you'd have a, basically a ten by ten room, and you'd have two separate, you'd have a wall divider, so you'd actually have two separate rooms. And that would come off the day room there at their current station. So, but, pouring about two hundred square feet of concrete, it's not a very big area, but it'd be, it's plenty.
So I'm gonna go back to the county for a minute. The county is having a workshop, commissioner's having a workshop Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday.
And they're gonna discuss, well, I don't really gotta talk about it.
So they called, asked that I'd show up, Max had called me and said, they're gonna have a, they're allocating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the departments. So they're gonna split that up into, I think, a hundred and, a hundred and seventy-five for equipment, a hundred and twenty-five, they're gonna start doing a paid, they're gonna start doing a paid per call countywide. And then they have another hundred and something thousand, or another hundred thousand budget for something else, so. Right.
It's our understanding.
In Winsboro.
And we, I, I don't have much more than that, other than the, the information that I've talked to the judge about. There seems to be an interest in some part of the commissioners to build another fire, fire station somewhere in the county. And I've heard everything from located next to the jail to located out by the interstate to located in South Franklin County. I think that, and then fund the department there, Blake has done a lot of research on how many county-funded operated fire departments are.
So there's, there's currently in the state of Texas, there's seven county-funded fire departments, and I have it right here. And out of two hundred fifty-four counties, there's only seven. So the ESDs, there was almost three hundred ninety, so like, you know, it's whatever, I think it's whatever you, you end up going with. But seven, you know, seven out of two hundred fifty-four, not saying that doesn't work, Hopkins County next door has their own, their own county fire department, and they, Amy Insley, the chief there, or the fire marshal, had come here and, and the commissioners had went and met with him and toured their facility, and he came here and gave them a little presentation. So they, they had kind of looked into that, so I think they're just, they're kicking things around, trying to see which way they want to try to go.
And Hopkins County's one point four million budget?
For Hopkins County with their volunteer fire department, they have a one point four million dollar budget. I have, I have a list of, of each department, and it goes up to LaSalle County Fire Department, which is six point eight million, and these are all county fire, county, the, Hopkins County is actually the lowest in the state of Texas. Potter County is the next at one point five million county budget.
So, it'd be up to the county to figure out where they're gonna find a million and a half to, to fund that. But I, you know, I've talked to the judge on more than one occasion, and also talked to their attorney about the possibility of doing some kind of interlocal cooperative agreement. It's Franklin County's the fourth smallest county in the state.
Four smallest county.
And it really doesn't make a lot of sense to do duplication, but it is what it is. But number one, we have to take care of.
Right.
Us first, you know?
The next closest, out of the, out of the seven county departments in the state, the, the next closest one to Franklin County would be Somerville County, and it's got a population of around, right at ten thousand, it's a hundred and ninety-two square miles, their fire budget is two point nine million. So. That's a lot.
A lot, man.
Yeah. The ESD, if the ESD had passed, or we'd pursued the ESD at the ten percent or ten cents, it would have only brought in around two point one or two point two. And that would have been for, yeah, for the entire county.
But as a county group.
As a county group.
That increases too.
Right, right.
So why is that off the table? I think I missed something. I mean, I, I know they didn't make the deadline for the paper, but.
They didn't make, right.
Do you have to start all over?
Yes, ma'am.
To do it in November, you have to get the signatures and everything again?
Right, everything has to start over, so you have to have a whole new petition and just basically start, start over, but I was.
But didn't you just say a few minutes ago, they're gonna look at it in about three years?
Yes, I was told that we might have to revisit this in a couple of years.
There doesn't seem to be any interest. Now, part of the story was that, that Blake went to the county commissioners and said, this, this is where we're at, you know, when we were talking about ESD, and, and, and they told you at that meeting publicly that, go ahead and get a petition, because we can't afford to do it. And then, then they kind of decided, no, once they got the petition, they kind of decided, no, that's not what we want to do, and they're trying to figure out another, another course of action. So that's kind of why, it just kind of fell through. There's a couple on the, the court, I think, that are just very opposed to it, and have kind of just said, we're not doing that right now.
And you would have to pursue it like in November, and then you could not pursue it in May of next year, because it had, you cannot do it in even number of years in the May election, so it'd have to, so if you didn't do it in November, it'd have to be November of twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-six, and then you wouldn't see, you know, you're talking, you wouldn't receive funding till almost twenty-eight. So.
And it's still the most logical thing, in our opinion, to do. But that's where we're at, I just wanted you guys to have the opportunity to hear all the facts, and these guys have worked hard on this, so.
So.
So if they filed it properly, when it came back to a vote at the commissioners' court, to vote to put it on a May election, but to, to clarify there, so you would have commissioners actually would have said, okay, we vote to send this to a, to let the citizens of Franklin County have a vote? So your commissioners have the ability to say, no, we don't want to let the citizens of Franklin County have a vote. That may sound crass, but that's the reality.
Right.
So your four commissioners are making the decision not to let this go to a, to the citizen of Franklin County who signed the petition?
Who signed the petition.
It is, it's not a good thing, I mean, it's, it's, we've had these guys work their butt off trying to find a path forward, make sure we all have the right protection we have in fire and safety, and, and there's not funding. And we're running countywide with a budget of three hundred some thousand dollars for the department that we're, we're paying from the citizens.
To protect the county.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we had agreed, we had agreed with the chiefs during the ten cent or ten percent, so it'd be basically, it's basically a, I forget now, I've kind of tried to let that go. It's a hundred dollars per year per a hundred thousand. So if you had a three hundred thousand dollar house, it'd be three hundred dollars a year. Now, that was a, that's worst case scenario, that's, that's what you would go in, and a lot of the ESDs, if you, you know, there's a, if you looked at the ESDs, a lot of them do go in at a higher tax, and then they immediately drop them. Because you, once you're set, it's almost impossible to go up, so you go in at the highest level and then you come back down. So that, the ten, the, the, we'd all kind of decided on was not a done deal, that, that's actually a board decision. Once the board is actually elected or appointed, then, then they, they're the ones who actually set the tax rate. The ten cent was just letting the, you don't want to come in there to tell the, the citizens, hey, we're gonna tax you at five, and then turn around and hit them at ten, you go say, hey, worst case scenario, this is what we're gonna do. So I think there was a lot of that was a little misunderstanding. So I think there was a lot of that was a little misunderstanding also, because that's actually a board decision, and it's not the, it's the ESD's board's decision. Absolutely. That's where most, and so I'll just tell you, uh, and just in the few months I've been here, uh, Franklin County is about fifteen years behind, the, the county itself. And so that, the, the need for the ten cent was also to help try to bring the departments up to par, once they're up to par, once you, you've got your, a little bit more volunteers coming in, and you've got some more equipment coming in, then you don't, you don't need that, then, then you do drop that, you start dropping that down. And so, and that's a, that's a very, if you look at most of the ESDs in the state of Texas, they go in at a higher tax, and they drop immediately because they see the funding. And it's always there, should something wrong, you could come back, but, uh, I haven't seen any that have gone back up. I mean, I've, from the, the, the stuff that I read, the safety, you see it's constantly bullet, they show in bulletins where they post continuously where each ESD has drops, and they drop, and they drop, and so, uh...
What, oh, place?
Oh, so. I have spent the six months, basically just, we have spent, uh, the city has spent a, a lot of money in repairing, uh, maintenance costs for our, our apparatus. We have a, you know, one of our trucks is, uh, twenty, I guess it's right at, it's, it's an old four, so it's, you know, it's right at twenty years old. And it's our, it's the red engine that we all, the rescue, which is now engine two, and then our engine one now is, is a two thousand ten, so it's fifteen years old. And we're continuously, especially running up and down the roads on these trucks, these trucks are mainly, these are, fire trucks are built for the city, they're not built for county roads. So that's another thing, you know, not to say that, but we, we actually have really good roads here in Franklin County, but, uh, so these trucks are wearing tear, and so you have to do continual maintenance. Usually, usually every fire truck goes in every year for, for preventive maintenance, and these have not done that over the years, and that's, that's common for, especially for volunteer departments. But now we're playing catch-up, and so we're continuously having to fix things on these things, bearings, front ends, that, that, that go out, and so we've spent a lot of money this year, the city's spent a lot of money in repairing, because these things are running up and down the road with, with pe- full of people sometimes, and, uh, so it's a liability, so we wanna make sure these things are up to par and safe as possible.
Back to the ESD.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on the tax, do you know how much, like, insurance would drop?
How much insurance? So, so that was?
Three hundred thousand dollar house.
No, that, so you're not gonna, and I, we've tried and tried, you cannot get an insurance company to give you a direct answer on that. But your insurance, so there are two things that factor your homeowner's insurance. Uh, one is your ISO rating, so these are things that we could, as a fire department, as a countywide fire department, we could, we could tackle this and drop the ISO. Most of your ISO outside of, outside of the, uh, City of Mount Vernon's becomes a ten, which ten is actually a non, nonexistent fire, so it's, it's harder to get insurance. The other thing that, that dictates your, your homeowner's insurance is mother nature. We can't do anything about mother, mother nature. So those are your two main factors on your, on that. So, yes, so the ISO, that was a goal of ours, was a three-to-five-year plan, was to drop the ISO countywide, not just for this area. Mount Vernon has a four right now, which is pretty good, but I think with the ESD, we've, could have gotten that down to a two, and the, around the surrounding areas around ten, around the lake and things, we could have brought those down, but you know, that, that would have take, that would take time, because you have to have, out in the county, you do not have hydrants, so then you rely on, on tankers and things like that. You have to do a pump test for the state fire, or Fire Marshals Association, so there's, there's a lot involved, but we would be able to do that. But, but not now. We won't.
Actually Jeff Burns did get a quote from Galian Insurance.
Oh, did he? Okay.
And, um, an example, I think it was on a five hundred thousand dollar house, that said, and an ISO rating dropped, I forget which number it was, we oughta get that from him so we can be more accurate, but say it dropped to a six or a seven. There was a three hundred dollar.
It was a significant amount. It would have, it would have covered the cost for sure.
It really was a wash by having it. So number one, this is about public safety first.
Right.
And it's, and it, and far as I'm concerned, it's a cost of living.
Right.
I mean, it, we're gonna, and I won't be real clear, cause we're all on camera and everything, I say this every time we talk about this publicly. Our guys are still committed to going countywide and protecting everybody, so that, that's not at risk, right? We're gonna do that. No, no, we're not talking about that at all. What we're saying is, the funding for that is gonna come from the citizens of Mount Vernon. If it doesn't come from an ESD or from some other means, so we, we are, we don't have the funds to do it. We're gonna keep doing it, we're gonna find it from other means, but it's not sustainable, and that's my message. And it's more than fire protection, it can bring EMT into it also, it, it can be fire and EMT together, it's not the, it's not just fire department here.
I was gonna read something about it.
Hey, not dotting the commissioners' court either, but, uh, cause that, that didn't get to them to make that, to be able to vote on it. Um, I would like to have seen that posted properly, so that it got to the commissioners' court, so they could vote. In the future, I think there's legislation that it may not even have to go to that.
Right.
So it may get to a point where this state legislator actually says, this, this is a petition, says you're gonna have an election, you're gonna have an election. So it takes it out of anybody's lap going, man, it's, I don't wanna look like I'm saying I'm for or against, saying it needs to go to the election is saying I believe the citizens need to have the say here. Not that I do, I do, I've, I've said this to them too, and their friends, I don't want that weight on my shoulder either, to say, hey, this is gonna be what we're gonna do, it needs to go to a public vote.
Right.
Period. Nobody needs to have the weight of that, that decision on their shoulder by themselves, that's why you have elections. So I think that's the, that's the, the big message here, is, it's, we need to let this be an election of our, our, our citizens at the countywide. We would get out of fire business, so it would be that ESD actually, we would not have a fire budget for the City of Mount Vernon, it would become that board, and our department here would all follow the same bill, so we would actually get out of, directly. And we're not trying to get out of it, so be clear there too, we're not trying to get out of our protection business at all, but if you have an ESD, you would not be directly the budget for the fire department, it would be the ESD that we as a county, which we're all citizens of the county, obviously.
Right.
So we're not trying to get our fire department business, so I would wanna be, I've heard that, I've had that kind of be alluded to, like we needed to get out of fire protection. I'm excited for what we do in fire protection, that's why I've spent so much time in this council, as of the last five years, getting it towards that today, so we're gonna continue to resource it.
Well, Collin County, I think, is probably one of the wealthiest counties in the state of Texas right now, and they're in the process of doing two ESDs. So that kind of gives you an idea of what, so it, you know, it's, it, it obviously may have its pros and cons, uh, but I fear a county like Collin County, as big as it is, the money that it comes in, that they're gonna go ahead and, they're gonna go ahead and pursue it and do two of them there, so that's, that would, it's kind of an eye-opener, in my opinion, on some, on some things. Travis County, most around Austin and Houston, those are all ESDs, and there's, you know, there's a reason for that. So. That's it.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Is it my turn? Okay, do we have anything to throw up on the screen? Um, um, y'all have seen the electronic version of the State of the City report. And, um, we've kind of refined it, and, uh, so I, I kind of just wanna walk through it, and I'll, I'm beginning with, I want to tell you kind of the origin of this. I had my two-year anniversary at the end of November, and here, and, and I'm very glad I'm here. But one of the first things that I did when I first came here is I, I took a real analytical view of, of the city in kind of eight different areas. Where are we on this, in our infrastructure, where are we in our IT, where are we with our personnel, so on and so forth, just right down the line. And so, you know, looking through all of these, I've, I, I did some analysis, and then I set some goals for where we are, from where we are, where do we wanna be, and prioritize those goals, and obviously, some of that work had already been done by the council, because y'all already recognized that infrastructure was a major, a major concern. So I kind of used that as a template to say, okay, we've done this, and now I wanna give a report to council of how far we've come in the two years that, you know, a lot of stuff has happened, and I want council to have this report. So that was the origin of this report, it was mainly just gonna be for y'all's eyes. And then our mayor here. He had this, he had this idea, well, you know, this is, this is interesting, this is some good stuff, we've done a lot of, y'all have done a lot of work. I mean, you guys, this has been probably one of the more active councils I've ever seen in my life, I mean, we've gotten a lot of stuff done. But, um, so people need to know this, that people need to have, they need to see this. And so, uh, Blake came up with the idea, let's go ahead and, and publish this, and get this in the hands of the citizens of, of, um, Mount Vernon. So since that time, we have been, I gave Angie like a twenty-six-page document. And she has format down to, is it less than ten?
It's, it's fourteen, isn't it?
It's fourteen. So, uh, I, I can be a little verbose. And she streamlined it, but it added some really, uh, much better pictures. And, and basically, what this document does, it just walks you through, the reader through, everything that, that we've done as a, as a city over the last two years. And if you look at it, especially in the area of the infrastructure, I mean, it's amazing what, the amount of work that has been accomplished, and, um... You know, everything from what Chad showed you to raw water pumps coming in, and, you know, everything else that has been done. Uh, it's just negotiating the water purchase contract. Uh, we've got, we've got the, uh, um, you know, some loan forgiveness out hanging out there with the Texas Water Development Board on a couple of huge projects. So what we have done is, we've kind of set the play, set the, the table for more growth coming in, and that's what we want. And that's another, that's another use of this document. Thursday at the EDC meeting, you're gonna hear about the housing market study, and you're gonna hear him say that, that Mount Vernon can probably absorb fifty houses a year over the next seven years, or seventy houses a year over the next five years, one or the other. And we will have a document that we can go to developers and say, hey, this is what the, this is what the numbers say. We can also give the developers this document that says, look at what, you know, we've done this to prepare for that. So that's the whole purpose of this, that's the whole purpose of this. We hope to have the final edits done next week?
This week.
This week? And then get it, and then if it's, y'all get a look at the final product, and then if it's approv, if y'all approve it, then we'll go ahead and get it printed and get it mailed. So, um, so, you know, I, I, you can read this. I'm not gonna read through everything, but we've, we've, we've had a lot of stuff, uh, we've, you should pat yourselves on the back. So.
I'm excited for people to see it. You don't have a newspaper, obviously, and, and we're open books, I've been, I've been big on transparency ever since I came in, and, and y'all have been too, right? So if we, it comes to the meeting, they've heard, you know, reports on these things for the last few years, but people don't come to meetings, right? So I get it to the, and a lot of people can't come to a meeting too, right, so.
I think it's great.
I think it's a great investment for us to set it out.
And I thought it was important, and I, and I'm glad that they, the rest of the staff agree with me, but I think it's important for, you know, everybody's name that works for the city to be up there.
Yep.
You know, it doesn't matter if you're, you know, um, you know, the most recent hire for, for the utility department, or you're in my position, your na- you should be, you know, your name should be up there, and obviously, y'all's names too. And we even put in the EDC.
I, I would like to point out that the mayor and Mark Saxi are on the same line. He gives us a really hard time.
I know.
He thinks he's like right here.
It's kind of like a Chad Cathy thing.
No, no, it's not, because we all know on his loss.
So I really didn't have a presentation, I just wanted to give y'all a little bit of history on that, so.
It's good stuff.
Any questions?
I wanna edit that page with the flow chart of people, by the way.
Do you like me to put the EDC board under?
I think so, it feels like it's a good spot.
What was that football thing?
No, great work.
Well, they're, they're doing it, they're doing it.
But y'all all are, it, it looks great, though.
You've got, uh, you've got a good team, y'all have a good team here.
What else? That offer tonight?
I don't have anything else.
All right. Well, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion for Mary, second from Rebecca. Thank y'all, appreciate everybody too.
Kind of missing my other wingman on this side.
I know it, I know.
His smart-ass comment. I don't know where he is. Apparently he forgot.